I'm telling you how important it is for us to be here today. We are experiencing one of the deadliest pandemics that we have ever seen. And the state of Arizona is a hotspot, one of the deadliest hotspots in the world, not just the United States. And so we had to make sure that we acted quickly on this. As a matter of fact, I had been harping on Governor Ducey for the past two weeks to pass mandatory mask as an executive order for the entire state or untie the hands of mayors across the state so that we can make our call. As of Wednesday and as of yesterday, city of Phoenix, Flagstaff, Tempe, Tolleson, Somerton, San Luis, Nogales, Tucson, amongst many other cities across Arizona have implemented mandatory face covering or face masks. And I wanted to make sure that we, I acted as the mayor so that we can put into, in place a mandatory mask.
What was that mask?
Emergency proclamation as soon as we possibly could. It takes effect 6:00 AM tomorrow morning. And I wanted you all to, to join us so that we can talk about the actions of what Pima County Board of Supervisors just took and, and move forward as a unified council. So with that, I'd like to pass it over to Mike Rankin that has much more, more of an update as to the regulations and the ordinance that the Board of Supervisors just took.
So, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you know, the only item on today's agenda is the discussion of the proposal that Pima County was considering and now has just approved with some changes from how it was actually proposed to the board. Together with the consideration of a equivalent or comparable city of Tucson ordinance that as went out to you and as was drafted, would track the provisions that were included in the mayor's proclamation that was issued yesterday. Obviously, given that Pima County's action on their resolution very strongly influences the outcome of what you may choose to do here today. That I figured I'd just start with a summary of their, what was a resolution, new regulations that, and I'll, I'll describe it as it was proposed to the board and what they were considering, and then how they, I'll tell you how they changed it at the table and what they finally approved. Fundamentally, the proposed Pima County regulations covered the same ground and imposed the same essential, essential face covering requirements as were included in the mayor's proclamation yesterday and in the draft ordinance that was provided to you for this meeting. In some, they each would require that all persons two years age or older, I'll get back to that in a second because the county made a change here, would be required to wear a face covering when they are in public places and where they cannot easily maintain a continuous physical distance of at least six feet from other persons. Also, each of the versions, again, I'm talking about the draft presented to the county board and what was in the mayor's proclamation and in our ordinance. Each version also required the parents and guardians of the minor children, so the ones who were subject to the regulation, to use reasonable efforts to make them wear their face coverings. I do need to read one correction into the record in the draft ordinance I sent out. In one place, I said that the mayor's proclamation applied to persons six years of age or older, but it's two years of age or older. It's six feet apart, but two years of age or older. The, each version exempted persons who have a medical reason for not being able to wear a face covering. And each included various common sense exemptions for when you couldn't reasonably be expected to wear a face covering, such as when getting dental work or medical work on your face, when eating or drinking while in a restaurant. In our version, it was so long as you're in your seated area, your table. And the county version, it's while you're still maintaining at least six feet of separation from other parties, so pretty much the same. Also exemptions for swimming and similar activities where you can't wear the mask. Each was proposed to go into effect very quickly. The mayor's proclamation set the time for tomorrow morning at 6:00 AM. The county's proposal, which has now been adopted, goes into effect immediately. There were a few differences, however, between the county's proposal and the, the mayor's proclamation and what is in your draft ordinance. Of course, the county proposal applies countywide, not just within the city limits, but their proposal as approved does apply within the city limits as well as in unincorporated areas. The county's definition of face covering is a little bit more restrictive than what, how we defined it in the mayor's proclamation and in the draft ordinance. I was going to show you. So the county's excludes face coverings that include a valve, a one-way valve like, like this guy. You've probably seen a lot of those. And we did not make such an exclusion. I have seen that type of exclusion. In other words, this isn't good enough. I've seen that type of regulation in various other cities and states, in part because some of these types of masks actually allow droplets to escape. But then again, many of them don't because they have an insertable filter that goes behind the valve. But nonetheless, the county's definition of the mask is a little bit different of the face covering. The county's.
I'll give you a legal mask.
Thank you, sir. I've got, I've got several, I'll just cut my shirt. There's a few additional exemptions in the county version. They created an exemption for the hearing impaired or the person that a hearing impaired is communicating with, for obvious reasons. The county, this might have been the biggest difference. The county didn't limit what I'll call unmasked contact to just other members of your household. So for example, we both created exemptions for if you're out exercising with members of your household and you're more than six feet apart from other people, you don't have to wear a mask. Well, they expanded that a little bit and said it's members of your household and other people in the same party, as long as it's not more than 10 people. And they created that same little bit of an expansion for within restaurants, et cetera, but still very similar. So enforcement and penalties, that's where there was a more significant difference. And now, based on what they've actually approved, this is the main area of difference. Through the mayor's proclamation and then even more specifically through the draft ordinance that was presented for the mayor and council approval, would establish a violation as a civil infraction with a maximum civil penalty of up to $50 or five hours of community service. The county's proposed version provided for enforcement that would start with posting online any complaints and pictures of violators, et cetera, so people could see the establishments that weren't complying. The county did, however, include in their draft that they will otherwise enforce per their existing statutory remedies. And what those are under their existing Title 36 remedies for health code related violations, the county primarily enforces through civil enforcement, which can include fines and orders to comply. But also does allow for criminal enforcement for egregious offenders. I'll be honest, I can't recall the last time that I saw the county charge someone criminally for a health code violation, but at least it was a possibility. So what happened? So the county approved the resolution today with some changes. First of all, they raised the age at which the mask requirement kicks in and exempted any children under the age of five. So that's one change they made at the table. But the more significant change is that they added into the penalty provisions that no civil or criminal enforcement of a violation can occur unless expressly approved by the board. So you saw me on the phone as we were trying to get ready. I was getting ahold of their attorney to say, what the heck does that mean? And essentially, it means what I just said, that their enforcement is going to be, at least initially, exclusively educational and that no civil citations, certainly no criminal citations, but we didn't, we weren't asking for that anyway, but knows even civil citations would issue unless the board revisits their resolution and adds that availability. So what, where does that leave us? So you had an ordinance and have an ordinance in front of you that we put together based on the mayor's proclamation and without the benefit of knowing at that time what the county would include, let alone approve as part of their resolution. Now we know what the, what the county action has been. My recommendation is I, I don't think it makes sense to have different regulations applying through the county's code and through a city ordinance, right? And create confusion. You saw a newspaper story today saying that the county's code would supersede the cities. That's not really true. I think fundamentally, if the city maintains you as the mayor and council and then the mayor through executive emergency powers if needed, you still have legislative authority to adopt regulations going forward that could apply just within the city if the need arises in order to protect public health and safety and prevent the spread of disease within the city limits. But nonetheless, it probably doesn't make sense, especially at the front end of this requirement, to have two different sets of regulations. So if the county had actually approved what had been proposed to them, my recommendation was going to be go ahead and approve today's ordinance, but just section one, which reaffirms what you've already approved by motion three times, that we are in a continuing emergency due to, a local emergency due to COVID-19 and that emergency health regulations continue to be needed to stop the spread of the disease. But then take out all of the regulatory provisions and instead just include language saying that the county adopted regulations today. We are good with them and we support those regulations being implemented within the city limits, but that we ask that any enforcement be limited to civil penalties and not criminal. But then include a specific statement that says the city nonetheless, through its mayor and council and mayor, reserves its legislative powers and authority as given under the charter and under state law to adopt any regulations that might be reasonably necessary to protect public health and safety and life within the city limits. And that way it would continue to let people know that what we all know and have experienced now for what, two, three months, everything changes every week, right? So there, there could be a need for some additional regulations a week from now, two weeks from now, five weeks from now, whatever. And, and so that language would preserve that and it would refer to the charter authority to do that as needed. The county's now thrown us a little bit of a curve ball, okay? Because they didn't adopt their resolution as presented. So in order, if the council is interested in at least there being the potential of a penalty for violations of these described requirements, then what we would need to do is essentially take the county's regulations, put them into our own ordinance and put a penalty provision in there that, you know, establishes a civil penalty, for example. I don't know that we want to do that on the fly in a special meeting here, but if that is where you are comfortable proceeding, what I would suggest, and I would ask the mayor to authorize adding to Tuesday's agenda, I could put that ordinance together so that the regulations in the city and the county are equivalent and, but that the city provisions are enforceable by a civil penalty, if that's what you're interested in.
Mr. City Attorney, I just wanted to make sure that.
we talked about what the Board of Supervisors did today because it just leaves it way too open for my taste. For the, I believe the motion that they passed talks about any civil or criminal infraction, which in my opinion, we should not have the choice of a criminal infraction. I think civil is different. And what we had in our proclamation was a civil $50 infraction or $5 or five hours of community service work. But the Board of Supervisors explicitly said that any, anything other than educational enforcement would have to go to the Board of Supervisors for their approval. What does that mean?
So best I can tell, and there wasn't much time to talk after they acted, but the county attorney did send me over a revised version of their resolution to capture the direction of the board. And that's exactly, that's exactly what it says in the last section where it previously said, "Further enforcement action may be taken in any manner provided by law, including as provided in ARS Title 36, et cetera." They added, "No civil or criminal enforcement action will be taken without the express approval of the board." So what that would mean is if there was ever a desire for even a civil infraction violation against a violator, whether that's an individual person or a business, the county health department and/or administrator would have to go to the board, schedule an item and either get an amendment to this resolution that frees up enforcement or gets direction authorizing that enforcement.
So.
I'm sorry. I was just going to continue with that line of questioning. So any type of civil infraction in order to prevent the health and safety of the public would have to be presented to the Board of Supervisors?
Right. Either, I would doubt that they would present a particular case and say, "Hey, we want to go after Joe Smith. Give us the authority." I think what they would do is they would go back to the board and they would say, "Hey, we are having some violations out there that we would like to pursue through civil enforcement. Can you please now authorize us to use our civil remedies under the code?" That's what I would expect, but I'm just guessing.
And that would be the Pima County Health Department asking for the authorization or the county attorney's office or the sheriff's?
Probably a combination that, but it would flow through the health department because they're the public health agency and the administrator of the code.
So this is what I'll do. I'll just go from Ward one to Ward six for questions. Vice Mayor, if you'd give me that time. Let's start with Councilmember Santa Cruz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to thank you for your swift leadership in this time. I know that all of us are kind of bracing ourselves about what's happening in this state at the moment. So I just want to tell you that I appreciate you. I know it's not an easy position to be in and I've been watching your commentary on the news and I'm just so thankful that I'm not in your position right now. I guess some of my concerns are around. Yeah, I mean, yes, I think I agree that there needs to be some consistency to lessen the confusion for folks. I think some of the concerns have also been around how do people access masks whom it might not be in a financial position. So I wanted to find out from our city manager. I know that we had gotten a stock of masks for ones we reopened to make accessible to the public. Is that something that we can go ahead and just, you know, give out to people now that it's mandatory for them to wear them? And then also just wondering what, I heard that the penalty in Phoenix was a lot higher than $50. And so I'm just curious around that conversation on the fine. And is that even on the table for the county?
I don't know if you want to respond.
Mayor, this is Mike. I can respond to the masks first and then turn it over to Mr. Rankin. Mayor, Councilmember Santa Cruz, you're welcome to give those out. That was the intent. There were two pieces to that. One is to offer them to people that may come in to meet with you. The other is for you to hand out. If you start running low, if you could let us know, we'll get you more. I think the original conversation amongst you all was to try to get you 10,000 masks. And I think we ended up with 2,000 initially. And then we'll keep replenishing those as you see the need.
Thank you, City Manager.
And Councilmember Santa Cruz, I just pulled up the Phoenix Order, which is a mayoral proclamation, and it authorizes a fine of up to $250. One thing to please keep in mind is that a fine of $50 doesn't end up being a fine of $50. Court fees and surcharges apply to every fine that's processed. And so, for example, a $50 fine ends up being somewhere in the range of $120 with case processing fees, et cetera, and state surcharges. So just keep that in mind.
So you're saying it's perhaps better to not include the fine and just stay consistent with the county on that? On that piece?
Oh, I'm not recommending one way or another on that. I just wanted to point out that sometimes when people say, oh, we've adopted things in the past where we say the fine is $100. And then the mayor and council start getting emails two weeks later and say, "Hey, it was $100, but I had to pay, you know, 200 because of all the fines, the fees and surcharges." So I just wanted.
It's helpful to know then that all of that adds up. So in reality, it turns out to be a lot more expensive to pay. Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions.
And the idea, Councilmember, was to be able to have some teeth in our emergency proclamation as well as the ordinance for the city of Tucson without being excessively penalized. But being able to have that teeth as part of enforcement of our ordinance in that emergency proclamation. Ward two, Vice Mayor?
So I just wanted to go over a couple. Okay, I'm not muted. I just wanted to go over a couple of things. The way I've watched the supervisors is that they literally were going to take it case by case. And I thought that was a little, that's kind of how I interpreted it. But I don't know if that's really what they really want to do. I think I tried to play out the scenario pragmatically. I tried to play out the scenario like, okay, what happens if a guy or a person is at a store? They won't wear a mask. They try to go in the store and they say, no, you have to wear a mask. And somebody then calls law enforcement or whatever and they respond and they say, oh, no, they have to wear a mask. And then they leave. Well, we give them an infraction. Or if they come and they won't wear a mask and they mount up at the store and the store tries to kick them out and they, those are kind of the things that I'm looking for. And the other thing is that what about the people who are kind of called out on it and they put a mask on? Or they're called out on it, they're offered a mask and they put it on? Like, I don't want to fine those people. So I think those are some of the nuances that I have a question about. And again, I think we all have those questions. And I think from a pragmatic standpoint, it's a common sense ordinance. And we're saying, hey, look, we're just trying to protect everybody. We're just trying to drop the curve a little bit. You know, today I went running at the park and again, we're 80 feet apart from people. And that's not what this is designed, this isn't to be designed for people to run up on somebody and be like, ah, that's you. You're not wearing a mask. It's not what it's for. So I want to be really clear that the intent of this is about public safety and public health. So with that, I think that the fine's pretty appropriate. I think we could take it down or have it there kind of as a placeholder. But I think it's a really nuanced, I don't see a lot of court cases going to this. I'm not going to see that. I want to be sure that we have a person who says, hey, look, I'm not going to wear a mask while I'm leaving. They're not, I don't want to fine them. If they're willing to leave on their own, then that's fine. Or if they're asked to put on a mask and they do, I don't want them to get fined. So I want to make sure we have some latitude in that ordinance. And if we can do that, then I think we should adopt most of the county parameters and accept that we add our kind of enforcement piece in as far as, look, no one's going to, no one's going to get arrested or haul off to jail because they're not wearing a mask. But they could get ticketed and whether they like it or not, it'll be on their account. And then the second piece is, is that I'd like it to, I think 50 bucks with the $70 that AOC takes from us. It's appropriate. Didn't we change some of the parking tickets so that we didn't, we were able to avoid AOC costs?
So Vice Mayor, a few things. I'm glad you brought up the issue about the ability of a business to refuse service to someone who refuses to comply. I had just finished circling that in the reso to make sure that I mentioned it. The county's version does have that and recognizes the right of an establishment to tell someone they need to comply or they need to leave. And Phoenix's declaration also includes that. The way that would work, it wouldn't mean that that person would get cited right away. In fact, everybody's language includes the fact that folks will get a notice and an opportunity to comply before there's any enforcement action, including any citation. So if they comply, they're good. If they leave, they're good. If they refuse to leave and refuse to put a mask on and the business has directed them to leave, then they could be cited, not just under the code, but actually for criminal trespass because they've been directed to leave and they're refusing to do so. So those are really the people who would be facing sanctions under that provision. As far as parking tickets, yeah, but that's not something we had to change a whole process about. So there's a way, if they're handled even before they go to court, to avoid the court, any kind of court surcharges and fees and AOC charges. And we figured out a way to do that with some of the parking citations. But if, once the court process starts, then those fees apply.
Okay. You can avoid. Last piece I'd be is, do we have a sunset or are we talking about an exit strategy? And the reason I bring that up is I don't want to set a hard date at all. What I want to do is have a community conversation about what goals and parameters the docs can create. And I think we're going to do that in another forum where we need some healthcare experts. But I want to be able to go to the healthcare and possible community and say, hey, look, what is it that you need? And what is it that gets you comfortable in being able to manage this? And I think once we have that conversation, we can really start talking about fully reopening and timetables and things like that. But, you know, obviously we're going to see our cases go down. But just because they go down, if we all of a sudden take the masks off, they're going to go back up again. If we go back to school. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. No, Vice Mayor, I think that's a valid point. But what the city attorney, the city manager and I have been doing to make these calls and these decisions as we have been doing so far is really relying on data and the numbers that we see, the numbers of cases that we see. As you may recall, before Governor Ducey opened up our state, we were in the teens. We were flattening the curve and we were really at a plateau. So we, back in early May, our numbers of COVID positive cases were in the teens, sometimes 20, 24, but that's, it didn't go beyond 25. Just yesterday, we saw in Pima County 325 cases. And so it really will have to depend on the numbers, the science and the data that we receive from public health experts. So that we can make these calls, right? As Mike Rankin was speaking to me today, we've got to be able to move swiftly because sometimes it's a matter of a day that we have to make a call on. Sometimes we have a week, but things can change on a dime in this emergency. So with that, I'd like to allow Ward three, Councilmember Durham, to see if you have any comments or questions that you might ask the city attorney.
So Mike Rankin, what are you proposing? You're proposing that we keep the the maximum penalty of $50, but would go to the five-year age restriction?
So Councilmember Durham, what I'm saying is that if the council, if the mayor and council, if that's the direction you want to go and say, okay, we're fine with the county regulations, including bumping it up to five and older. But if you want to include the specter, the possibility of a civil sanction, I think the way to accomplish that is say, okay, rework the ordinance, bring it back on Tuesday, track all the county regulations, including the increase of the age, if that's what you want to do. But include the civil sanction that has been described. If you want to go a different direction, then let me know and I'll tell you how you can get that, go that way.
Okay. No more question?
All right. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Fimbres? Oh, no, I'm sorry. I missed, I'm sorry. Councilmember Lee?
Hello, everyone. I, as a mom, also kind of like the five and up. I can't imagine having my kids when they were toddlers and it would cause them to touch their face a lot more possibly. So I did like that change that the county made. I don't know if anyone else's offices have received feedback against this or not. But, you know, I think if this has taught us one thing, it's just that the impacts of one person can really ripple through and affect our whole community. So I just hope that everyone can do everything they can right now to help our community because it's really going to take all of us to be able to fight this thing. And the majority of the concerns that we heard were for medical reasons and that's clearly addressed. So I feel like we've done everything that we can do to really address the concerns of folks who may not be huge fans of this ordinance. Also, what Vice Mayor said, hopefully we could maybe add this to the COVID item and every week, look at the numbers and kind of understand where things are at. Because I know no one wants to know that this is going to last forever. So I think that will be really helpful in kind of coming out with what the exit strategy looks like on the other end of this. One question I do have is just the county, you know, has the public health as the enforcement agency. So for us, how would this play out? I know TPD is really busy right now with a lot of things. So how would the enforcement piece look like for the city?
So that's really an excellent question because if we end up adopting what I'll just call a parallel ordinance, but with a civil penalty, we'll have a situation where the county has its regulations, we have ours, those regulations are the same. The county is the public health agency. We'll still have enforcement authority throughout the county, including within the city. But they won't have any authority to impose any kind of sanction, right? They, under their resolution, they'll still have the ability to post complaints and pictures and violators on their website, et cetera. But that'll be it. So if we have our parallel ordinance in place, if we're interested in pursuing a civil infraction, then we will have to enforce it in particular instances where we want that penalty. instances where we want that penalty to apply. And so that would include a citation by, by TPD, or it could be long form from my office, but that would be more expensive than, you know, any fine that would ever be recovered. And then we would cite it into city court as a civil infraction violation.
That's all the questions I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Fimbras?
I have some questions. The one is, it says not to exceed $50 or five hours of community service. Who will make the determination whether they can pay the 50 bucks or do the community service? And are we taxing more of our courts, or is that going to be your office, Mr. Rankin?
Councilmember Fimbras, citations would go to court. Judges, a magistrate would hear these as civil infractions, just like a code violation. And the magistrate would impose the fine, which, since it's not to exceed $50, would be anywhere from zero to 50, and, and determine whether the violator could do a, a community service instead. Typically, if the, if an offender is found responsible, and they say, I, you know, I want to do the community service rather than the fine, the court lets them do the community service.
Who determines what community service to do?
There are, I believe, I may get this wrong, so I haven't been over to court for a little while, but generally, the, the courts will allow the person to bring in the proof that they've performed community service with an area nonprofit or recognized group that carries out public service activities in the city.
Okay. And I, I kind of agree that the age of two is too, too challenging for parents. I think five years would be good, at the age five year. And I think we need to really mimic what the county's doing, because people get confused. And, and, you know, when they say the county's rule, the state's rule, and then our rule. So I think we need to be consistent. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Fimbras. Councilmember Kazachek?
Thanks. So I'm glad we're having this meeting, so we can hear each other's perspectives. I think it's interesting to hear what others are thinking. First of all, I got a couple of questions for, for Mike, and then a couple of comments. Well, with respect to our provisions, will we be providing masks to bus riders? Or maybe that's an Ortega question. Will, will our drivers have masks to pass out to riders as they get on?
Mr. Ortega, I believe we've already directed the city manager to, to provide face masks for our transit drivers. So what I, what I have the question about is our homeless community, but this was done maybe about four weeks ago, Michael. I'll leave it up to you to answer the question.
Sure. Thank you. Mayor, Councilmember Kazachek. So we have provided masks to the drivers. We are not providing masks right now to the riders. One of the things that we will explore is giving the drivers some mask to have with them. Last thing we want is for someone who's late for work and forgot their mask to not have one, and then be, not be able to get on the bus. So we will work those, through those logistics, but I do not believe that we have done that yet. But we will certainly work to, to make that happen.
Yeah. So that was my question. I know we give it to the, to the drivers. The question is, if we're gonna take a mandatory, that would fall in the, space. So we have to at least give them a fair shot at having one. Also, to Mike Rankin, I've read the county's ordinance. It's not clear to me, the definition of a public space, public schools, daycares, private schools, I believe they fall within the umbrella, but is that the way you read it?
Yeah, I did, Councilmember Kazachek, members of council, Mayor, I, I did read it that way, because it's any place, either indoor or outdoor, open to the public, and then includes examples, but that's not an exclusive list. One thing to keep in mind is that as we move forward and schools start back up, if they do, that there, there could be some sovereign immunity issues, right? As separate agencies of government engaged in governmental exercise, like education, you know, the U of A, for example, or TUSD schools, they're gonna be able to establish their own rules in terms of mask requirements for their students when they're, when they're on campus.
Yeah, yeah. So the daycares and private schools would fall under our jurisdiction, though. So the--
Yeah, and actually, private schools, charter schools have an interesting argument, because they have some statutory authority that they be treated the same way as--
Okay.
So--
That's not, not a deal breaker for that. So first of all, I would say this, I think the snitch line in the Board of Supervisors having to vote on a, on a penalty is pretty lame. Both the proclamation and the proposed ordinance, our proposed ordinance, remember, education is first. We were not out there trying to bust people for not wearing a mask, and the fine is last. But this, this recovery is not gonna reboot until COVID's under control. So let's remember what this is really about. I mean, the county's actions are sound, what Rahida put out yesterday are sound with respect to medically driven policies. But earlier today, I went and looked at the numbers. When, when the governor reopened the state in quotes on May 12th, we had 11,000 cases statewide. Today, we have 46,000. When he reopened the state, Pima County had 1,600. We're over 5,000 in Pima County today. So his opening the state clearly is not working. I, I don't even think going with masks only is going far enough, but I know that's not what we're talking about tonight. I think what's important for us tonight is to do the two things I think that really are included in, in the ordinance in front of us. Number one is to continue to declare the emergency, so that that's not going away. And so we have both the proclamation option going forward and the, and the ordinance option going forward, but also to reserve our right, under our own charter, to continue to adopt rules. If this, if this skyrockets tomorrow, and it might, then maybe next Tuesday, we are talking about shutting down restaurants and bars again and doing takeout only. So we have to reserve that right. We can't give the county our charter authority in whatever we do tonight. I agree with both Nikki and Richard that five is a reasonable age. I've got a two and a four-year-old. Granted, I can't even imagine trying to keep a mask on those two kids. So yeah, this, I, I, so I would agree. Let's, I would, I would say, let's do the five, five-year-old, but we should have the right as a jurisdiction to impose minimal fines as included in the proclamation. And if that means coming back Tuesday to check that last box, I would support that.
Well, I agree. I, I believe that the proclamation and the ordinance should move forward today. I, I'm amenable to changing the age to five. Actually, as a matter of fact, that's where we first started, Mike Rankin and I. But we did see that the more than 1,000 doctors and nurses and healthcare providers in their letter to Governor Ducey highly suggested that the age be two and over because of the possibility of children also getting the virus in, in children's COVID-19 and their symptoms and what they go through is really more, even more horrible than what adults go through. So, but I am amenable. I, I think that generally, in reading the resolution by the Pima County Board of Supervisors, I'm in agreement with it, but I too believe that we should reserve our emergency powers and the powers given to the council by charter for us to move as quickly as we possibly can if we need to do that. And I also believe we should have, we should have teeth to our policy, and of course, being clear that we are gonna do everything we possibly can to educate the community, to encourage social responsibility with each other as, as community. And so I, I'd like to consider a motion that we proceed. How would you like to, how would you like to word this motion, Mr. Rankin?
So Mayor, based on the, your comments just now and Councilmember Kazachek's, I have a suggestion. I think you could actually proceed and adopt, let me get through the whole thing before everyone reacts. Adopt the ordinance as presented, except as follows. First of all, you're just adopting section one, which is declaring the ongoing emergency. Take, take out all the regulatory provisions and include a new section two that would read as follows. Today, June 19, 2020, the Pima County Board of Supervisors adopted and approved Resolution Number 2020 dash, whatever it is, they haven't put a number to it yet, requiring persons within Pima County to wear face coverings when they are in public places and cannot maintain a continuous physical distance of at least six feet from other persons. The mayor and council endorse and support the provisions of the Pima County resolution as adopted, including its specific requirements and exceptions, and support the implementation and enforcement of those requirements within the incorporated areas of the city of Tucson, except as follows. The mayor and council also reserve their legislative and regulatory authority as provided under the Tucson Charter and under Arizona law to make and adopt all regulations that may be necessary or expedient for the preservation of health and suppression of infectious disease within the city, and reserve their authority to adopt additional regulations beyond those included in Pima County's resolution, including a penalty provision for civil penalties for violations. And then we would take the rest of the ordinance out. I'd rework the title to conform with that. You could approve that now, and then we'd still come back on Tuesday with the ordinance to incorporate those provisions with a civil penalty.
So move, and that's, that, that's what we need. And that motion is--
I'm sorry. Let me, let me call out. There is a motion, and Steve, I think you said you wanted to second?
I see. Yeah, that's fine. Whether it's the motion or the second, yeah, that gets--
I think Councilmember Fimbras motioned, and Steve will second it. Vice Mayor Cunningham, you had a question? No?
No, I was just second.
Okay.
I have, I have a point of clarification.
Sure.
So, city attorney, does that mean like we're just kind of like buying some time till Tuesday, whether or not we do the civil infraction of the, like the fine piece of it?
Councilmember Santa Cruz, yeah. So it would reserve all the mayor and council's authority as a governing body, as well as the mayor's authority as the executive in terms of emergency power. And it gives me direction to bring back an ordinance that parallels the county ordinance, but includes a, a civil penalty provision. It does not require that the council approve that Tuesday, but it gives you the opportunity to do that. And in the meantime, since it would become immediately effective, because of the, the balance of the ordinance as written, it would allow the actual regulatory provisions to kick in and be consistent between the city and county immediately.
Okay, so we're voting on, we're gonna mirror what the county has put out there, but by Tuesday, we're gonna like figure out the whole fining piece or the infraction piece.
That's, yes, that's what--
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Would, would that include an update to age five?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, it would.
All righty. So there is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If there is none, Mr. Clerk, can you start roll call, please?
Nick Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbras?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachek?
Aye.
Mero, Mero?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero, and this becomes effective immediately. With, with that, I'd just like to also further direct the city manager that we do provide a face covering or face mask, not just as people are entering city building, but also in, entering our transit opportunities. Make sure that we're also making face masks available to nonprofit organizations that take care of our homeless communities, so that, that they have an opportunity to also protect themselves and the public surrounding them. With that, thank you all so much for making yourselves available, and I hope that you've enjoyed your Juneteenth day, and that you have opportunities to celebrate Juneteenth and what it really means for our country throughout the weekend. For those of you that are fathers, Happy Father's Day on Sunday, and have a great weekend.
You too, Matt. Matt, a mayor. Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.